If you continue standing and I'll offer invocations. Oh, there you go. Let me turn on the... Good and gracious God, as we gather tonight for tonight's meeting, let us commit to serving the residents and the people of our community with humility and candor. Help us to listen to all the voices, to weigh proposals with care for public good. May our deliberations be guided by integrity and evidence and transparency, and may we treat one another with respect even if we have disagreements. Grants has patience and common ground and the courage to do what's right for our citizens. And as always, we want to thank you for the blessings of our police, our fire, and those who protect us and our military. And be with us here tonight. In your name we pray. Amen. It was 45 seconds long. They had to leave the end. May I have our Planning Commission Secretary please call the role?
Yes. Commissioner Luhon?
Present.
Commissioner Sakali?
Present.
Commissioner Legaspi?
Present.
Vice Chair Uva?
Here.
And Chair Gera?
Here. See, we can't even disagree. How do we say here or present? No, I'm kidding you guys. Okay, this is the time set aside for oral communications from the Planning Commission. Does any commissioner wish to make an announcement, report on a conference meeting, or request items for a future meeting? And I'll start, Vice Chair Uva?
I have nothing.
Okay. Sir?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Luhon?
Nothing.
Okay.
I have none.
Okay. I have one little report to bring out. I was telling our staff a little while ago. So last meeting, you know, we had a discussion, a long discussion about Hotwood Motion and how we make certain motions, and we had a lot of briefing, and it was all done very civilized, which is coming back to our agenda tonight. But there was a timeout break from our staff. They wanted a few minutes, and we, as a Planning Commission, were here. I stood up, and I was telling war stories about past things that happened in our city. And one of them was, you know, we talked about how much it costs to bring portals here. One of them was about Boz Big Boy. And I said, you know, there was a $2 million project, about $900,000 from the Economic Development Fund that we had, which of course the governor took anyways. And I did make the comment that it was probably a terrible deal financially for us, but it's something that we wanted to rebuild Boz Big Boy, and we're proud of that. Well, evidently, it was a live mic when we said that. So some gentleman wrote a nasty letter about it to the local paper and to me and so forth, saying that first of all, I'm not a very good chairman because I can't even know how to form a motion. Okay. You guys remember, we did 15 different motions and how do we form it? And number two, how, you know, here I was talking trash about our city and spending the money, which of course you guys know that. So I just want to let you guys know that all the little war stories I was telling you as being from the past on there were all recorded. I went back and listened to it, and there's not one thing that I'm ashamed. I said it's all truth, and it's all things that really happened. But I did want to report, sir, that gentleman is watching again tonight. It's like, you know, we heard you, and you're silly. But anyway, so I did want to report that. And then the other part is, it's not, we're not talking out of school here, but Vice Chair Uva and I seem to have this timing thing at the last, before the last meeting. You know, I always go and do my homework and inspections, and I know some of you all do too. So we were at that one house that we were discussing, and I pull up on the street, was looking, a driver around the block. Commissioner, Vice Chair Uva drove next to me, and we both started laughing, that we ran into each other at the location in our separate cars and so forth. So fast forward now a couple of weeks ago later to today. So this afternoon, I normally don't do it at this time, but I went around to something or whatever, and I went to the location that we, that's on the agenda tonight. And of course, who pulls up next to me in the parking lot but Vice Chair Uva? So we had a good laugh, that we didn't even get out of our cars, but so we got to stop meeting like this, as the old joke says. Okay, so, all right. So does the Community Development Director have a report on City Council action or any other general updates?
Thank you, Chair Gera. Just a couple of clarifications for the future item that you'll consider, item number eight. There's a corrected memo with some outlining some typographical errors that you have on the dais that's been placed in the back of the room as well for the public. Just when you get to that item, I just wanted to make you aware of that. And also, there's a revised agenda on the dais and also available to the public, which reflects item number two on the agenda, which is the flag salute and the invocation provided today by Chair Gera. That will be included in any future agendas as well. So just wanted to clarify those items. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Everybody got a copy of the memorandum, so you have it for our records when we get to voting on the consent calendar. So that's great. So now is the time set aside for the public hearing for PLN 2500055 regarding conditional use permit. Does the Planning Commission Secretary have proof of publication?
Yes, I do.
Great. Will the Community Development Director please introduce staff making the presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Gera and Commission. Tonight's item will be presented by our Assistant Planner, Marissa Montero, and she has a brief PowerPoint presentation that she'll be providing today for this item. Thank you.
We didn't scare her from last time, then? So she's back? No.
Good evening, Chair Gera, Vice Chair Uva, Commissioners and members of the audience. The item before you tonight is PLN-25-00055. Sorry, I'm having a little trouble with the clicker. All right. This request is for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a massage therapy establishment in an existing 1,189 square foot tenant space at an existing commercial center located at 9464 Firestone Boulevard. The existing commercial center consists of two parcels and is developed with two buildings. The first building, located adjacent to Firestone Boulevard, labeled A on the screen, contains 1,723 square feet and is divided into two tenant spaces. The second building contains 17,549 square feet and is divided into eight tenant spaces. A CUP for a massage therapy establishment was approved by the Planning Commission on January 17, 2001, to allow M&amp;A Day Spa to operate at 9472 Firestone Boulevard, which is the tenant space outlined in red. The subject business is requesting to relocate to another tenant space within the same commercial center, 9464 Firestone Boulevard, which is outlined in green on the screen. Because a conditional use permit is specific to a particular tenant space and address, the relocation of the business to a different tenant space requires approval of a new CUP. If the commission approves the CUP tonight, the original CUP number 00-107 and the associated resolution will be repealed in its entirety, and that has been included as a condition of approval. This slide shows the existing conditions of the business' current tenant space on the left and the proposed tenant space, which is currently empty, on the right. The subject property is owned C2 with the general plan land use designation of general commercial. The surrounding area is a variety of zones and land use designations. Immediately to the north, east, and west are commercial zones, and to the south is multifamily The proposed hours of operation are 9:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., seven days a week. Staff includes nine employees, consisting of six massage therapists and three managers. Client volume is expected to range between two and 10 appointments per day, and services offered will include acupressure, massage, and deep tissue massage for varying lengths of time ranging from 30 to 60 minutes. This slide shows the proposed floor plan, which includes a reception and lobby area, four massage rooms, two restrooms, designated shower area, and support spaces that include an employee lounge room, a lunchroom, and a laundry room. Regarding parking, the proposed use would be categorized as personal services, which requires parking at a ratio of one space per 300 square feet of tenant space, which results in a requirement of four parking spaces. The relocation does not increase the overall parking demand for the site. The DMC requires massage therapy establishments to comply with Chapter 5 of Article 6 of the DMC. In accordance with the California Massage Therapy Act, any person who performs massage within the city is required to have certification from the California Massage Therapy Council, CAMTC. Additionally, all massage establishment owners are required to hold a CAMTC certification. Further, certified massage practitioners and massage establishment owners are also required to receive a permit from the Downey Police Department prior to the issuance of a business license. Along with the certification requirements for all massage practitioners and massage establishment owners, massage establishments are also required to abide by certain operational regulations. These requirements relate to things like lighting, ventilation, maintenance of records, and sanitary standards. Staff has included conditions of approval to reiterate and emphasize the CAMTC and operational requirements for owners and employees of the massage establishment. The Development Review Committee discussed and evaluated the project as it pertained to planning, police, fire, public works, and building and safety matters. The current business owner acquired the business in 2022. A review of police department calls for service since that time revealed no significant concerns, with reported incidents limited to traffic matters, one case of larceny, and one disturbance. The Planning Division has also included additional operational conditions of approval, including requirements for unobstructed visibility into and out of the business's windows, customer entry exclusively through the front entrance, and maintaining the entrance door unlocked during business hours. The other departments did not express concerns or opposition over the project and issued standard conditions as proposed. Staff has reviewed the proposed project for compliance with SEQA and determined that the CUP is exempt from further review under SEQA Guideline Section 15301, Class 1 Existing A public notice was issued for this item. On August 7, 2025, the notice of the pending public hearing before the Planning Commission was published in the Downing Patriot, and on August 8, 2025, the notice of the pending public hearing was mailed to all tenants and property owners within 500 feet of the subject site. Staff has not received any correspondence in response to the public hearing notice. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 25-4054, approving PLN-25-00055, thereby allowing the operation of a massage therapy establishment located at 9464 Firestone Boulevard. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Does the Planning Commission? Thank you so much for that. Thank you. Does the Planning Commission have any questions to staff? Commissioner Luhon?
Is the, where their current location, is it smaller or is it bigger?
Commissioner, do you mind turning on your mic, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Now, is the current location, is it smaller than where they're moving to, or?
It is, I think, slightly larger.
But like, less than 100.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
That was all for me.
Thank you.
I have another question.
Of course.
In the building, is there parking lot for the staff? Parking space, I'm sorry, parking space for the staff?
There's, there's not a designated parking area for staff for the entire site. Required parking is based on a ratio determined by the Downey Municipal Code and doesn't specify, doesn't specify requirements for separate employee parking.
Okay, so if there are nine employees and two to 10 appointments per day, is there ample parking that you show in the parking lot? Because I didn't see the parking lot.
Yes, you're right.
Could you go back to the headshot on the first or second one on there? Because I think that kind of shows it from the, no, there's one that's got a picture. Yeah, this one has the parking there, yeah.
That's the whole complex, sir.
Yeah. So I think the business owner can answer questions about staffing. The nine total employees is their total amount. Again, they can answer for scheduling reasons, but I don't anticipate that all employees will be there at all times.
Sorry, go ahead. If I could add something else. Commissioner, the, this is a multi-tenant center, and the parking spaces are shared between the various tenants within the multi-tenant center. As, as our Assistant Planner mentioned, the requirements within the Downey Municipal Code do not require separate parking spaces allocated for staff or employees or customers. So the proposal was evaluated for the parking required within the municipal code, and there is enough parking to meet that minimum requirement.
Okay. So you never had any issue in parking, parking issues in the past? I'll take it.
I believe that question would be better answered by the property owner who's, who's here in terms of any parking issues that their tenants have experienced.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Cycley, if I could, I could answer some of it. Over to the left, I think it's the third one, and there's a restaurant there, Fernando's Peruvian Food, and I go there once every couple of months. So I could tell you that, that parking lot is, it's not an issue.
Okay.
And that's going, you know, at noon. Yeah, so, yeah. They got goods almost on top of it, too. Anyways. Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair Gera. By the way, great, Fernando's is fantastic. I see why you go there. I go there, too. It's great. Ms. Montero, do we know, how many years has the applicant, how long had they been at suite number 9472? How many years roughly?
Yes, so their original CUP was approved in 2001, and they're currently in that tenant space, so 24 years?
24.
Yeah. 24 years. And this business owner acquired the business in 2022.
2022, okay. Before or after the acquisition of the business, do we know if any, any existing neighbors within the center, has anyone ever complained about this, this business and for any reason?
So we, prior to 2022?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so the, the police department shared concerns regarding previous investigations of the subject business. In 2012, the police department requested revocation of the CUP due to investigations involving prostitution and solicitation under the previous owner. However, upon review at that time, when they requested the revocation, the city prosecutor determined that there was not substantial evidence to pursue that. While reviewing this application and processing it, that was mentioned to the applicant and the new business owner, and the business owner provided a signed statement to staff acknowledging the issues in the past and committed to operate in a professional manner, which they have been doing since 2022. And they've also reaffirmed again the regulations and requirements that I covered stemming from Chapter 5 of the Downey Municipal Code. So in short, yes, there were some issues in the past that were thoroughly investigated, and again, staff made sure to discuss that with the applicant and the current business owner.
Thank you. So just to clarify, from 2022 to present, we've had no more law enforcement complaints? Any more citations?
Correct. Yes. On this slide, I mentioned that any calls for service since that time were traffic-related, one issue of larceny and one disturbance. Detail, yeah, I would say that.
I saw that. I saw no, you know, no calls for service. Normally, we relate to a call for service with, within the applicant or the, in this case, a tenant calling for 911 assistance. When there is a criminal investigation, it wouldn't be a call for service, it would actually be penetrating the location for illegal activity.
Correct.
So that's where I'm going with this.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that, actually. Yes, so calls for service is one category, and then further, I had further conversations with our representative from the police department, specifically asking for the previously mentioned investigations, and they gave me the dates of those. The most recent one was in 2018. So again, prior to this new business owner.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Chair Gera, if I may add a couple items, just in general, for the property, the commercial property, the code enforcement has worked closely and cooperatively with the property owner and property management team, and they're in the audience today. They've been collaborating as far as making improvements to the center. You might have noticed, there was, not too long ago was recently painted. They have voluntary, on their own, have security, which I think Chair Gera had mentioned to me prior to the meeting. They've maintained their landscaping, they've really taken a look at their operation as a whole, as a center, to make sure that their tenants have an environment that is inviting to not only the tenants, but also the businesses that come to those, the patrons that come to those businesses. And so maybe through the public hearing, if there's questions about that, the, they can answer those questions. But I wanted to provide additional context that, from the code enforcement standpoint, the property owner and property management have been responsive and proactive in working with city staff to make some of these improvements to the center on a voluntary basis. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And then Vice Chair Uva?
My question was asked by Commissioner Legaspi, so I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you go back to the very first one again, the map, the overhead map, one more? There you go, that one.
Yes.
So they're going from the red to the green.
Correct.
Do we know what's in between there? Or what's going to be in between there?
Yeah, so, thank you. That's a great question, too. So tenant spaces, this, this request has been initiated because unit 9474, 9472, and 9470 are being combined to accommodate a larger tenant. Therefore, the business owner has been cooperating with the property owner and property management team to move to the now vacant space at 9464.
Do we know what kind of business that's going to be?
Staff may know better, but it's plant check, I mean, it's in plant check, and it's a medical office that's in, currently in plant check.
There's a medical office to the left of B already there, too, right?
So I believe, if I'm mistaken, it may have been a dental office prior. This new tenant space is existing business in Downing that's relocating to this site, which, as Marissa said, is taking over the three tenant spaces as mentioned.
Okay, and it's going to be, okay, if it's medical, then I go back to your question about the parking, but that's going to be sufficient. And the last one is a Hertz budget car rental thingy business on there, but they don't, do they park cars there? Or is that just an office that you can buy a Hertz used car or whatever?
Yes. In analyzing the projects, the Hertz car rental, their space has been evaluated, I believe at the office ratio, but then they also haven't allocated 10 parking spaces for their rental vehicles.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so I, you know, I go there a lot, and that's how much I pay attention. I did not know that till today because I made a point of looking at it. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so before I open the public hearing, call the applicant or the representative, this would be a time for Planning Commission to disclose any pre-hearing site visits or pre-hearing discussions the commissioners may have had about the project. I'll start to my left.
I have none, Chair.
Okay. And then Vice Chair Uva?
Like was said previously, I did drive by the property this afternoon and viewed it from my car.
Great. Mr. Cycley?
None.
Okay, great. So now, the public hearing is now open. Will the applicant or the representative please come forward to give testimony of Welcome, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is David Krakoff. I'm from Westland Real Estate Group. We manage the property on behalf of the owner. I've been managing their property for over 20 years, so I'm very familiar with the, with this tenant, with the previous tenant, and the general conditions. Some of the questions, I could answer off the top of my head, I guess, not necessarily in any particular order. Some of the questions that were raised, someone asked about staffing. The, the package says there'll be nine staff people in the spa. I asked the business owner, who is also here this evening, and she said there's no more than three at any one time in the unit, so that shouldn't affect the parking at all. Also, regarding Hertz and its parking, before Hertz came into the, to the property, we looked at the parking and found that they were actually overparked. In other words, we had more parking spaces than the code required, and that is why we gave Hertz some reserved spaces behind the building for their cars. And it doesn't, doesn't seem to be a problem. We have no reports from the tenants over all these years of any parking issues, even when the dental office was there before, Smile Care, which is the space that the new, the new medical, I think it's Wesley Health, is going to be occupying. So they're relocating and expanding, and they wanted to stay in the city, and this is almost the only place that they could have. So I know they have their building plans already submitted, that they're just waiting for us to take care of relocating this one tenant, and then they can get started on their construction and moving into the property. Lastly, it's, it's a tenant that's been there a number of years. We're basically just taking them from this space, moving them over to that space. We were actually surprised that required a whole new conditional use permit. I understand that's a lot of the land, so that's why we are here tonight, but we appreciate your support. It looks like there doesn't seem to be any opposition. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Are you the same Westland that built the Downey Gateway?
Yes, we are.
Okay, I remember that. I was, I was on that.
We don't own it any longer, but we did it.
Right, no, I heard that you guys sold it.
Right. And then we do, you know, staff can tell you, we have another property that we're trying to redevelop and beautify not far from this one, and we're in the stages of going back and forth with planning on what we can do, what needs to be done. It's the old bag factory. So that property and the one next to it, we're trying to do something creative and fix up that whole part of town.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, there's a new Korean barbecue opening up at their old place. Thank you, sir. Is there any, any other questions for the applicant, for anybody here? Okay, great.
Yeah.
So may staff confirm there's been any correspondence in favor or opposition?
No correspondence, was just here.
Okay, great. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the, or opposition of the applicant? I only see them here, so seeing them, maybe we'll, here. Okay, this time, if I see no other objections, I am going to close the public hearing. So the public hearing is now closed. It's time now for the Planning Commission to deliberate, and I'll start with Vice Chair Uva.
I have no objections. I think we should move forward on approving this.
Okay. Commissioner Luhon?
Yeah, nothing for me. I just, they're being very, you know, kind to the property, you know, to know where to move to accommodate the new tenant, so very nice of them. And moving is a lot of work.
Yeah. Commissioner Cycley?
No further comments.
Commissioner, look at me.
I think my only comment is I'm glad that they're doing good business and, and we cleaned it up. So that's, that's great. Thank you for that. Thank you.
So what is the pleasure of the Planning Commission?
I'm making a move, motion, move motion to adopt PLN 250055, and then the resolution, what is the resolution number?
If I can, if I can ask you to amend your motion to PLN 2500055.
Did I say wrong?
You just said an extra point there or something like that, if that's okay with you. Say, we have a motion on the floor there. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay. We have a motion and a second on there. Any further deliberation? Okay. If not, I will ask for a vote, please. Okay. One person is missing.
He didn't press.
Apparently he didn't. Maybe he didn't press hard.
You're gonna push the buttons, sir. No. See, you're gonna get criticized from that person.
Motion passes 5-0.
It passes 5-0. Okay, great. All right. The actual, the planning commission will be final unless the matter is appealed to the city council within the next 15 days. So, okay, great. My pass. Thank you. You guys don't have to stay on. Is Yankee still with your company?
Yes.
Oh, well, tell him Mario Gara said hello. I remember that. You guys, okay.
Bye.
Yeah, I was mayor when we opened that in 2013, the Downey Gateway. So, okay, non-agenda public comment. I see nobody here. Okay. So there's no yellow card. So we'll go to the consent calendar with the changes that were brought up. And if we, approval of the minutes of May 7 and of June 4 of this year. We're getting caught up. We're doing good here. We're almost to present day. Then, well, it's not going to be any minutes in July. Does this bring us current? No, we have the August 6 one. Yeah, we got.
Chair, we went out of order a little bit. We do have some older ones, but you are right. We are getting caught up. So we'll bring more in the future dates.
Okay, great. All right. May I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar items?
So moved.
Okay. How seconded?
Second.
No, I already did. You're too slow. I was looking, waiting for you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Heather, please vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. And we have the administrative report too already in there, right? Yes. The one from last week. Okay, last month. Okay. Does the community development director have any additional comments for us?
I don't have any other updates. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Her city attorney, Mr. Finken?
No, nothing from me, but thank you.
Okay, great. All right. Well, then with that, we'll adjourn at 7:05. Meetings adjourned. Yay. I was painless.